Council study session agenda for Monday, February 14, 2022. We'll call the meeting order and we have our items for discussion tonight, including presentation of the PALS plus permitting system. And for this, we have our planning manager Courtney Brunel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Give me a moment to share my screen.
No problem.
Okay, hopefully you're looking at the permits dashboard.
Yes.
Yes, great. Okay, again, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Good evening, I'm happy to provide an update on our new permitting system, SED PLUS. This new system was created through a partnership between the city and the city county, sorry, and Pierce County, and is modeled off after the PALS PLUS permitting system, which is highly regarded in the region as being efficient and very easy to utilize. Our team has been using this new system since October 27th of 2021, and we launched the public facing portal, which is what you see displayed on the screen on January 1st, 2022. Compared to our former system, the new system is completely modernized, and it allows for users to apply online, make payments, schedule inspections, run reports, use GIS. And tonight I'm going to demo just a couple of those more utilized features. Here on the user dashboard, at a glance, individuals who are logged in can see their applications or applications that they follow here in this first box. And next in box two, you see our general office hours, our special notes are found in box three. General permit application review dates are shown in this fourth box, and any scheduled inspections that were remaining, but by the time that we're looking at this this evening, we have none that are left for today. So if you were to log in tomorrow morning, you'd see our list of inspections for tomorrow. And then next we have our shortcuts. So for our search archived permits, what this is, is the link that would allow for a user to go on and look up any permit from prior to October 27th, 2021, which is still stored in our former system. If an individual wanted to look up a current permit, they would go up here to permit search. They would be able to enter in application information, parcel, owner information, applicant name, any of these fields, press search. And assuming that there's only one permit connected, they would either be able to select from a list of permits that fits within those parameters, or they would be directed directly to the permit that they're looking for information on. Just a general user would have access to all of this information without needing to log in. So they'd be able to see the current status of the permit, the significant permit details that you can see on this screen, use these different tabs to see if any departments were at different stages in their review, the fees, related permits, any documents that are made viewable through the public portal. So we've found that that's really significantly reduced already our requests for some PRs, and we've just been able to link folks directly to the portal to get the information that they're looking for. If they are logged in, a user is also able to use these functions. So they can add in auto notification. So anyone who's interested in a specific permit, even if they are not the applicant, can go on and get an e-notified of details surrounding that permit. They can pay fees, print a copy of the permit, renew a permit if it had expired, resubmit, schedule inspections, really any of the activities that they would want to do typically. By, they used to give us a phone call or send an email, now they can just go right here and make those requests. Going back to the permits dashboard, our next feature that I'd like to highlight is the ability to apply online. So when folks click on this apply online button, they're first prompted to log in. Next, users have two options. They can apply for a permit that is parcel or site specific, which is 99% of our applications, or they can apply for a non-site specific application, which would be like a right of way permit. For this demo, I'm selecting this create an application online. And then the first step is to enter in an address. I decided to pick on City Hall this evening. Next, the user would verify the address and select create here under create application. And then they're provided with a general option for permit types and categories to choose from. Tonight I'm going to select new construction, which is one of our more common categories, which takes the applicant to just the screen of general disclaimers about the system, how it functions, file size limitations, submittal fees. And we then select begin, verify their information, and then select some details about the type of project that they're looking to apply for. This is where we really start to gather that project information. For an application, under build or construct something, they're initially asked to what the type of project is. For this, I select commercial, and then given even a further subcategory and an option to just enter in a really short description. Our technicians use this information to assign application types. All submitter, submittals through the system are given to us as just general submittal documents. So if the applicant was to select the wrong category or the wrong permit type, it's very easy for us to adjust without them having to go back and make any changes on their end. Okay, next. We provide a list of attachment options. The system only requires one document in order to process an application, but since our system is new and users are still familiarizing themselves with it, the permit categories that we have, we've linked a really wide range of applications and documents that may be relevant to the selections that they've made thus far. So all of these blue hyperlinks take them directly to our applications which are stored on our website. If they already have it, then they could just select browse and go ahead and upload it here, or they are directed to a fillable form that they can then fill out and upload. And then we require construction documents or suggest construction documents, and then if there were additional documents that don't fit within these categories, they can upload those as well. The last step is just verification and then submittal. Once the applicant submits, they receive an auto email right away, and they're automatically signed up to receive those auto notifications anytime that a comment is made on the project or that the status changes. Under our former system, our applicants were emailed by a member of our permits team directly. They would send us an application, we would create a Dropbox, and then there would be a series of emails that went back and forth. This system has really streamlined our permitting process. We've received a lot of really positive feedback from folks that are able to just interact with the system to pay their fees, schedule inspections rather than having to make phone calls and send us emails. And we've also found internally that we're much more organized by having everything come in streamlined through one portal rather than through multiple Dropbox.
Courtney, does this give you the permit opportunity to pay online too as you keep submitting?
Yes. So back under that permit search function, number is assigned by a technician. The applicant is sent one of those auto email notifications saying that your permit is ready to be paid for online. It gives them the balance and gives them back that link to then go and make those fees. And we all continue to collect fees via check, but the vast majority have come in through the online system since we launched. Back to the dashboard, I just wanted to quickly highlight a few of the other features. Users can now run some really basic reports online. Here's a list of those report options. Tonight I selected the application permit report, the second one listed here. And this is again a feature that you can do without having an account created, so any member of the public. For this report, users can select a department that they would like information on. This requires information or the information that's required is highlighted in red. Our most common department is typically the building departments. That's the one I selected for this evening. Individuals can select an application type that they wanted to further narrow it down, if they wanted to see demos, for example, or new commercial buildings, and then select what type of application status they're looking for. So do they want to see ones that have recently come in or just accepted, approved, final, issued, or maybe ones that have expired? This is another area where we've seen or we anticipate to see a reduction in PDR requests. We've had a lot of PDRs over time that ask for this information, and now individuals in theory will be able to find themselves online. Then there is the date range that they can select. Maximum date range is 30 days. From that, you get a window that pops up with the detail of all of the permit data that fits within that category. So you can see that from January 14th to February 11th, the building department issued 100 permits. And here is a snapshot of those permit details. Throwing that number out there, I do want to, I do want to mention that we are continuing to utilize both systems. So right now we have some permits that are continuing to be issued out of our Eden system as well as SED PLUS, and this is just the building department, not any of our other rooty departments. Back to the dashboard, the next upgrade I wanted to highlight is our public GIS system. Prior to this system, we used PDF, PDF map images. We did not have any online integrated GIS system outside of what the county provided. Now, individuals can search for their property information online using this public GIS. They can search by address or parcel number and display layers that are specific to their property or citywide, like zoning, plat data, for example. They can also find additional details on their property, our site links directly to the assessor treasurer data, county data, and now our local data. Here's an example of the types of data that would be found under that Lakewood detailed list for any individual parcel. We also now have the about me feature or about my property feature that you may have seen if you've used the Pierce County system or the assessor system, which again links to the assessor's website. Last feature I wanted to highlight this evening is the online chat, which you can see here with this have a question icon. During open counter hours, any member of the public can chat with a member of our team. Once they click on the icon, they are only required to start with a name and just a general question. Our office assistant tends to be the first line of defense, and she fields them and routes them to a permit technician or another member of the review team if they aren't able to answer. Though the vast majority of the questions that we've received thus far have been system interaction questions or just really general permit questions or intake questions. This has been a pretty popular feature. I'd say that we get at least three a day, sometimes as many as a dozen, and our office assistant is able to answer the majority of those questions that we receive. If outside of office hours, somebody was to come in, they would be prompted to put in their name, their email address, and their question, and then a copy of that would be sent directly to our permits email, and we would respond the following day. As I mentioned in the memo and earlier on, the system was entirely customized. So with that, we are able to change and adjust features to improve the user experience based on the community feedback that we receive. We have already done a fair amount of that in the first month and a half that we've been live, and we anticipate that we're going to continue to make some minor changes over time. Moving forward, the county and the city will work together on significant system improvements in order to create a more standardized permitting experience across jurisdictions. So when the county receives an update, the city will also receive the update and vice versa. Thank you for giving me the time to provide you with this update. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much. Let's see, Mr. Branster has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Brunel. I have a question regarding languages other than English. To what extent does this system support residents who are users where English isn't their preferred or comfortable language?
Councilmember Branster, I believe Google Translate is a feature that is integrated into this, but I'm not seeing the typical widget that I would. So I'm going to get back to you on that and just verify tomorrow with some of my own experimenting.
Okay, I guess I would particularly be interested in whether or not, what our capability is to speak to someone in either an online chat or answer their submitted questions in a language that they submitted in.
Certainly. In the past, when we were operating an in-person counter and even currently, we have members of our permitting team who are able to speak Spanish. And then for additional services, we would have to hire a translator or find translation services. And we, that Spanish speaker is available via the online chat if we were to run into that specific scenario. But pertaining to the website itself and translation, I will have to experiment, and I will get back to you tomorrow.
Well, it does, it also does seem that we're not the only user in the county who's using the system that perhaps has a need to be able to be supportive of of a variety of residents with a variety of languages. So this would be something that I wouldn't want to see just customized only for Lakewood. I would think that the county should have an interest in customizing it and making it available more broadly as they're trying to expand the use of this amongst municipalities of the county and themselves.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I, I just note on that 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 would have to be a translation services Ms. Brunel has referred to. To program that in would literally cost millions of dollars. It, it has to be a translation service, not the, the programming of the application submission itself because of the expense of the system.
Sorry.
Oh.
So.
There you are. Yeah, go ahead.
So yes, I believe that you're right, Courtney, that you do use Google Translate, and that's how they would use for the system itself. As far as the languages, they typically would hook to like the language line that they would call into. So I'm sure that that's something that we could utilize, and it wouldn't have to be customized or anything like that intense.
The question or a statement or? Yeah, I have a follow-up question on both of those comments, Ms. Brunel. And the question is, based on the in-person, you know, front desk sort of help that we've done over the years, how much language translation has been needed from our anecdotal experience?
Speaking purely anecdotally, it's, it doesn't come up that often. We certainly, typically folks that are coming in that do need translation services in the past have had somebody that comes in to translate alongside of them. I can think of three instances off of the top of my head in the last five, six years where we have had to find a language service or even bring out a member of our counter or a member of our staff to come and translate. In those instances, though, those staff members have been available, and it's really just created a more, an easier conversation and a more comfortable conversation for the user.
Got it. Okay. Very good. My, my two follow-up questions, unless I see any other hands. What's our annual licensing cost? I assume we pay it to the county?
Yes, we do pay it to the county. There is an annual licensing cost of around $60,000. And in addition to that, we also have an agreement with Amazon Web Services that is $1,000, that is a shared cost between the county and the city, and it depends on the month and the amount of document storage that we have. And so that and are billed directly by the county for that as well.
Got it. And then who maintains the, the updates and the system improvements that are unique to Lakewood? Do we do that or does the county do that for us?
The county does anything that's impacted by the system. All of the customizations, for example, the shortcut widgets, updating application information, fees, that would all be done internally.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions, folks? Let's see, the hands raised. Well, thank you. It seems like a very exciting improvement. And we're looking forward to it. So more to follow. I might even try it out myself. I'll throw something in just for fun.
That sounds great. Test our online chat.
Yeah, I'll need to. Well, very good. Any other questions at all? Otherwise, we'll go to the next item, which is the review of the climate change work plan with Mr. Buwer.
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor and council?
Yep.
Okay, I'll go ahead and start. I'll try to keep my comments brief. Over the last several months, the planning commission has been working on, has now made recommendations on a proposed three-year climate change work plan. The council is requested to review the commission's work, and if this item is ready for city council action, it returned to the city council as a resolution adopting the climate change work plan. And then thereafter would be incorporated to the city's strategic plan. This process began back in July of 2021 when the council adopted ordinance 756, which approved a series of comprehensive plan amendments for 2021. And one of those was a new energy and climate change chapter. In the chapter itself, there was approximately 89 implementation measures. And I distinctly remember both the planning commission and the city council expressing some concern over the number of measures being proposed, and it seemed a bit overwhelming to take on so many so soon. So in the fall of 2021, the planning commission took on the assignment of whittling down the number of implementation measures to a more manageable level. They all just also discussed a two, three, and five-year work plans. Eventually, they settled on a three-year work plan. They met five times through October and through January 2022. They were assigned homework by city staff to see if they could come up with a series of recommendations individually. And then from that process, come back to the full group and see if they could come up with some sort of cumulative level of recommendations. So it was very much an iterative process. They had to, again, make collective recommendations. They also conducted a public hearing. And then they did the final piece, which is editing and finalizing the work plan text. Part of this too was they've actually taken action and recommended approval of this on a 5-0 vote. And in your packet is the culmination of the commission's assignments and work plan items beginning on pages nine through 11. Very briefly, they went from 89 to 35. I would say our comment to the council as a whole, the commission's recommendation, our reasonable approach to addressing climate change, very measured and trying to stick to the basics. And as this subject evolves, the legislature and Department of Commerce in future years, it kind of sets a position where the city is at so that we have a benchmark for further review and amendments to the work plan as time progresses. I would like to note some key recommendations. We do now do annual greenhouse gas emissions report. We've done that for 2020 and 2021. And we use that using Google's Environmental Explorer database, and they make projections on energy use throughout the community. There's also a very exciting public engagement plan underway using University of Washington students. They are both doing a qualitative and quantitative surveys on climate change specific to Lakewood residents. I would suspect that they're going to finish up the qualitative rec, our interviews and surveys the end of this month, and then follow up in March with use of significant number of surveys throughout the city. Another interesting aspect behind this is partnering with energy providers to reduce energy conservation. We do have three different purveyors in the city of Lakewood. The fact that we are not an energy provider is unique and makes this a little bit more of a challenging exercise. And another recommendation is to examine climate change from a regional level, that this is not just a Lakewood issue, but one that impacts the entire area. Another one that has some particular importance is a new non-motorized transportation plan with very specific goals and policies and trying to fix and repair and bring forward policies that will assist the city in future grants. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to end my comments and return it back to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Buwer. Any questions of Mr. Buwer on the climate change work plan? At least the initial bite at it. Ms. Farmer?
Did the planning commission define reasonable? The word reasonable?
No.
Did they define the term measured?
No. Those words are being used by myself based upon what I saw them move forward with, councilmember Farmer.
Is there an outcome statement or a sense that we will be further along in our quest to try and get ahead of climate change or at least keep up with it in three years based on these 40 items?
I think that's difficult to predict right now. One of the biggest problems that we are having is with greenhouse gas emissions based upon automobile use. And that is the predominant problem that we have with climate change. And I really don't know how, I don't have a good explanation how to solve that at the local level, except with, you know, promoting electrification of vehicles and promoting transit oriented design. So those are some of the things that you see as part of the action items, but in a limited form at this time.
Did any of the action items come with a specific, like we would, we would do task number two in order to affect an X change?
I'd have to think about that one a little bit more before I answer.
Yep, no worries.
I do think that, you know, doing a public perception study is going to help the community work towards incorporating an environmental justice component, which is one of the act, action items or work plan items as being suggested with this proposal. I do think that if we are able to reduce some energy consumption, but it will be more than three years before we're able to really take a look at it, would be through energy conservation, which would be a while, as would be some of the actual requirements the state is coming down with for energy conservation for new construction. So none of these things are going to happen quickly.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Branster?
Same, Mr. Mayor. Same, Mr. Buwer. I appreciate planning commission working through this to include the work they did back a year ago with the initial element of the comprehensive plan of where they were knew that they were, that they were not done when they did that. But I had a question on the items that are not on this plan, but that were listed as near-term items in the comprehensive plan chapter. Is this going to generate needing to do some amendment clarification of the comprehensive plan in the next cycle?
I would tell the council that this remains a bit of a work in progress. Right now, the city cap, the city staff is waiting on Department of Commerce to come out with recommendations on a climate change chapter to comprehensive plans, a sort of a format. So that has not been finalized yet. So in many ways, we're kind of out there going it alone, trying to do something at the local level to address climate change. So I'm I am waiting to see what the state has to say about future policies as well as action items. And look at that in comparison to what we've done, compare and come back with uh changes. Now, as some of these things are also accomplished, you know, my 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 goal is to report back to the city manager that we actually finished. Uh, but some of these are going, it's going to be a while before we're able to get a a full grasp upon uh climate change in general and and the requirements the state is going to impose on on local municipalities.
When we uh approve the um the climate change chapter of the comprehensive plan, we kind of identified things as a sh- uh short-term, uh midterm, and long-term uh items uh as well as uh immediate needs. Um, one of the immediate needs that was identified in the comp plan was to establish carbon sequestration targets. And I'm not seeing that in the work plan. Um, although I do see the other immediate need. Um, is was there some reason why the planning commission is not recommending that in the next three years, we get some carbon sequestration targets established? Somewhat goes to council member farmers um looking about, well, where are we trying to get to uh other than just better?
The commission had the opportunity to review all of the eighty-nine implementation measures, and through a voting process, that one fell out. Now, carbon sequestration is talked about slightly different in the work plan. It is talked about as looking at it from the aspect of economics. It's there, but not in the same text that it was originally submitted to the planning commission and council.
So uh uh that for an example, if there was a task or some specific action we wanted to add to the work plan, we could uh amend it to do that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. And I and another thing in the comprehensive plan had to do with using um the 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 Heal Act uh is as as kind of a lens on 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 things. It was one of the things we thought we would do in the comprehensive plan, and I uh, is that embedded through these tasks, or is that what when you refer to, we're waiting on commerce and the various state agencies who are who are the and the implementers of that? Uh, is that sort of waiting on them to give us some idea about what the Heal Act lens is asking for?
I would say the answer to your question is both. Um, I I would tell you that uh task number one, in in my opinion, embeds aspects of the Heal Act into the process. It's just not done yet. And then on on top of that, I do expect that uh the Heal Act will come up as a part of the of the Department of Commerce's development of a model code for climate change.
Yeah. Uh, that in the uh status column on the work or the progress column on the work plan, uh, there are a couple of items. Yeah, I understand what not started, and I understand what in process means. Uh, and continual, but I'm not quite sure what is meant by on hold, and I'm looking at items thirteen and fourteen. Um, where this progress is on hold.
On 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 thirteen, the reason it says on hold is because there's two different type of energy codes that are uh under review. One already exists and was attempted by the city of Olympia and didn't work out very well. The other one is a lead proposal, which is referenced in the document. We're not sure that incorporating either one of them is a good idea at this time, since the, you know, the state is looking at significant revisions to energy codes. So while it's being considered, there's other things that are in play. So that's why we chose to use the term on hold for that one. Number fourteen, use a supplemental greenhouse gas climate change impact worksheet of climate change impacts and potential mitigation when conducting an environmental review process under CIPA. I believe that we're going to need to have to have a WAC uh uh amendment available in order to do that. It does not exist right now, and so therefore that's why it's on hold. One question that's come up internally, is this something that we could develop and use and do so uh on a voluntary measure? That's something that we are considering, but we haven't really taken action on it. Thus, that's why I put on hold.
Okay, so so do I interpret then that not started is something we're going to get going on, but this is, this is something that we're waiting on something else before we can?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, when I look at the items that are on here, that it looks like there were the last two items, the Clover Creek flood plan engineering analysis and the um Miss Qualley Delta item. Uh, you know, they were not action items in our compreh- climate change comprehensive plan. So would you envision the planning commission recommending them to be so to keep the comprehensive plan aligned with this work plan?
Yes.
And and the last thing is there are a couple of references to the strategic plan, and you made some things to do that. Uh, and it talks about uh the current strategic plan and things to do that. But of course, our problem is we don't have a current strategic plan. It it went from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty, and then we never extended it or 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 reviewed it. So maybe this is a uh a question for Mr. Caulfield or because the strategic plan was more broadening, climate change. Uh, are we going to do an extension or another three or five years strategic plan uh soon?
Um, Councilmember Branstadter, your, the underlying foundation of your strategic plan are your adopted city council goals and objectives. So that has been done. And then we're in the process right now of developing the work plan to implement that.
Okay.
Councilmember Branstadter?
I I I yes.
Uh, perhaps my language was poor. Uh, instead of saying strategic planet, should have said twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three work plan, so my apologies.
Oh, oh, well, 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 we're good. I I I I will say that that it's trying to keep the uh the comprehensive plan current uh is will be uh something a couple of years from now, as we start to accomplish some of these things, or we determine that some of those eighty items that are not on this list uh are really not the feasible long-term goal. Uh, I guess my last question really is um there's no cost estimates associated with this work plan, the those going to come to us through the um the next biennial budget and the elements of this that are playing, you are you that you're planning to undertake in twenty twenty-two, do you have the dollars to do it?
Uh, right now, the the plan, Mr. Branstadter, is bring forward a uh a a full-time equivalency starting the second half of twenty twenty-two to begin the implementation of the climate change work plan, as well as the policies in the chapter. Some of these things, yes, will move forward with the current budget, but other items, for example, the non-motorized transportation plan, I do know that Public Works is working on that, and that will come as a separate uh discussion and and budget review by the uh the city council that may have already been approved in their twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget, I can't recall. Uh, other items, uh tree preservation code. Uh, the city council, when they had, did approve a budget authorization for that. Uh, urban forestry has not been approved as a budgetary item, and and that will have to come back at its future date for council review. So this, this just establishes placeholders for potential uh climate change actions. And then we'll be followed through with uh actual budget estimates, either as a part of amendments to budgets, new budgets, or specific actions as uh as this, as they move forward to the to city council for for budgetary authorization. So it'll be a variety of different ways. And some of it will not even be the city of Lakewood. Um, and for example, uh, the last one involving Miss Qualley River Delta, for the moment, it appears that the si- the state of Washington continues to carry the water on that one. So in other words, that one is just monitoring through both SS and CP and Community Development Department. Short answer is it's going to vary.
Uh, okay, but generally, I would expect that in the next biennium budget request that the that's since this that's the second and third year of this three-year plan, you'll you'll work to integrate those in where where they're needed.
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branstadter. Any other questions for Mr. Bueller on this particular item?
I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Ms. Farmer?
I'm I'm curious, Mr. Bueller, as to some of the items that are marked continual, particularly numbers twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-five. Are we not already enforcing the Uniform Plumbing Code or the International Building Code or the Energy Code?
Yes, we are. But since that's an ongoing process, and there will be construction of code amendments throughout the life of this work plan, I'd like for us to take credit for the things that we're doing. And that's why I've listed them as continual.
Fair enough. Um, there are several uh tasks here that talk about reviewing and as appropriate, as appropriate updating plans. Now, let's see, number fifteen and number twenty-one, for example. And I am curious as to how those will impact climate change.
Uh, for example, twenty-one, uh regularly update the downtown subarea plan in Lakewood Station District as market conditions and climate conditions change. Much of what is in that document has to do with transit-oriented design and in debt debt and also improvements to existing roads and streets. Um, that in itself, uh by getting people out of cars is an opportunity for the city of Lakewood to address climate change. For specifically the downtown subarea plan, there's a significant amount of work that needs to be done for to the proposed street program to incorporate new curbs, gutters, and streets, sidewalks, for example. Uh, we do have a review ongoing. That's going to be a part, I believe, of the twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan update. We're going to talk about how much money we've collected to the traffic mitigation fee. And then also to talk to the council and Public Works about where we are and how have we been able to move that forward or not? So, you know, those are aspects of this that deal with climate change. Um, I know that the city council has had numerous discussions about parking. Potentially, parking reduces uh greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, that continues to be a subject that needs a little bit more refinement. And that that's another area that we're coming back to both the planning commission and city council this year. The hazard mitigation plan, that's something that's put together by the police department and the fire district. And uh, it's a a prudent to begin uh to consider climate resiliency. And adding those kinds of items to the mitigation plan as appropriate, a good, good case in point is Clover Creek and the work that Mr. Bucic is doing. And uh uh to follow up with that one, um, if I five floods as a result of Clover Creek, and there's no access for I five for a period of week, how do we handle the movement of vehicles off of I five onto city streets and then back on to I five again, going in both directions? So that's how I look at it from a hazard mitigation perspective, climate resiliency, and how the two intersect with climate change.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, that's all for now. Thank you. And thank you to the planning commission. This is, this is very, very hard, hard work. And there's a lot to consider um between all of the things that we would like to do and uh what staff is available uh to do the things that we that we can do. So um, thank you.
Any other, uh, Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Mr. Bueller, is there, is it kind of, is there any thought of uh ranking the impact for effort of these various items? I mean, we can say we want to uh you use a non-climate change example, environmentalism, we 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 wanted to do something about the uh the wasteland of plastic in the Pacific and ban straws. How much does it cost to ban straws? What good will it do? How does that compare to saying you can't have uh Styrofoam cups? I mean, it's uh it it, we can have all sorts of laudable messages in our climate change policy. But when we put our own dollars behind it, how do we decide which efforts to prioritize?
It's an excellent question. I I will tell you that just getting this down to a a number of thirty-five was a bit of a challenge. Um, at one point, the planning commission did prioritize these. But in order to get the group to come to some sort of consolidated effort, the prioritization kind of fell off to the side. Well, we just focused on thirty-five. If that's something that the council, the, yes, the council wants us to do is to go back to the commission and ask them to take a look at which of these are priority and assign some financial dollars to them as well as effort. That's certainly your prerogative.
Thank you.
I would very much support that. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just jumped in.
No, it's okay. So what what's kind of the thought here for Mr. Bueller and the team as we go forward? Because next Monday, if we don't chew on this further, we've got the resolution that's uh before us for adoption for this particular work plan. So is there some desire to kind of send this back for further refinement, or what's the what's the collective thought? Let me go to Ms. Farmer and then Mr. Branstadter.
I would, I'm not quite ready to make a vote. I would, I would love to um see how each task is related to what in climate change? What what are we trying to go for when it comes to climate change with each of these tasks? I would also like to honor the fact that we would like to get credit for the items that we're already doing, but that's not a new thing that we're doing to address climate change. That's business as usual. So s- some differentiation, and I'm not entirely sure what that looks like. I also um agree very much with the prioritization because there's a lot here and uh cost. Um, it it costs in dollars and also cost in time. I don't know, uh, for example, the conversation that we had about the hazard mitigation plan, how long will it take to to look at the areas of Lakewood um in in regard to some of the larger climate change issues that we could have? So that, so that will come into play as well, time, energy, cost. Thank you.
So if I hear you correctly, before I go to Mr. Branstadter, are are you considering or thinking that maybe the chart expands to two additional columns such as um anticipated impact? Maybe some sort of target or measurable outcome, and then a column that might be uh anticipated uh city investment or something like that, right? Is that what we're looking at?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mr. Branstadter? Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'd also like to see the. If not the plan itself, the decision matrix on deciding about the plan to have uh, a. Something that at least groups these tasks, not strictly prioritizing in one through thirty five, but. Looks at them as to. Which ones are going to be the most impactful in terms of 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 of.
Measurable, yeah.
Making a difference. And then uh, the same too can maybe several different categories in terms of cost so that they're high cost, low cost. Or or whether they can be internally funded or they need external funding to accomplish uh, and uh. So I I I'm not particularly ready to 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 vote on it without looking at some of those things. I think if some of these things we decide. We're going to do them, but it's not going to make much difference. Uh, you know, um. When I first came on the council, there was a. A mantra that. Anything that anybody wanted to do in the city, you had to say that it impacted economic development. Uh, because that was the. The uh, 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 the the key word they gotta consider. And I wouldn't want climate change to become like that of just saying, well, it's a way to. Try to get attention to to a project to be able to go and do that. There are a good number of things on here that that. We're gonna do anyway. They have their, 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 their near term. Impact on climate change is somewhat tangential. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna put in streets that have uh, traffic circles and so there'll be less idling cars at stop signs and. But I, but um. You know, I I it's it's not totally a um. We're not really doing it as a climate change initiative. We're, we're considering a climate change lens in designing roads. Uh, uh, so I guess I would like to see something in the order of. If if not prioritizing, at least accessing, how impactful do we think these different things are going to be? And then. Where are they in the range of costs?
It sounds like we're consistent there on having a couple of different columns or considerations, Mr. Buer, for. Impact and likely investment city or otherwise, right? As best we can swag it.
Uh, yeah, I don't, yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. I I I have a, I think a fairly good read for what the city council is deciding right now.
Ms. Farmer?
I wanted to uh, put a. Put a finer point on what Councilmember Branstadter was saying about most impactful. I'm not sure that's reachable, um, because some will be low hanging fruit. That might be easier for us to to get at quicker rather than later and some, some will just be such a long term. Process, but if we don't start somewhere. And so both are impactful in their own way. Um, so I I I get what we're getting at. Um, but we might need to think of a different um. Uh, classification system, for lack of a better terminology, but I understand.
It also makes me wonder, Mr. Buer, a little bit on. I'm hearing the comments. There are some of these categories and some of these tasks that enhance our ability to score favorably on projects, right? Either TIB projects or projects coming down down from PSRC.
Yes.
Would that necessarily have to be another category that has a star to it that this will help us, you know, score better for X, Y, or Z?
Yes, uh, a score, a scorecard for grants would be a good idea.
Hmm. So I know that's part and parcel to what we're looking at on accounting wide planning policies at PSR or PCRC and those kinds of things. All right. Well, very good. Well, great discussion. Anything else from? Members of the council? Any any legal spin on it, Ms. Walker? I hate to leave you out. You know, we gotta make sure the lawyers feel like they've had their point, point one or point two.
No, it sounds like you got a very thorough report from your. Assistant city manager, community development director. This is the only time I give Mr. Buer a great praise, so he's happy that you called on me.
E- exactly. Yeah, it was all set up, Mr. Buer, so it's kind of. Teeing it up, as we say.
This was planned in advance, wasn't it, Mr. Mayor?
Exactly. Thank you. Appreciate the good work. It's a certainly a great work in progress and I'm sure that the community will embrace. The effort and the specificity of what we put to task here. So with that, we're going to keep you in the hot seat as we go to item three, review of our annual housing report.
Are you able to see that?
Not yet.
Okay, hold on.
I've only got four screens set up here. I'm trying uh, the new. Laptop. Well, you can't see it because of my crazy. Screen there, but Brianna sent out the new laptops, guys. When you get those, you'll find it really nice to be able to mark on. Uh, the agenda items and the information as we go through a study session because you got a little marker pen.
How do I move that?
It'll be good for us.
Share.
There you go.
Thanks to Brianna for helping me out there. I appreciate it. Um. This is uh, what constitutes our annual housing report that uh, I've been presenting to the city council for the last couple of years. Uh, this is just a uh, opening slide. Um. Uh, the report itself is. Something that we do just to give the council an idea of the housing topics. Uh, I tend to vary the. The uh, content of the report from year to year on the far left. You see the basic topics of the annual housing report. The report is quite lengthy. Talks about area population, income and poverty, market conditions, housing production. Housing assistance, subsidized housing, housing plans and policies. A special report on mobile home parks, and this was something that came up from Councilmember Bokey last year. And so I thought I would include it this year. Did speak to environmental factors affecting housing. And why do we have the problems we have and how can we fix this? Those are the primary subjects within the report. I'm not going to go through it in great detail. Uh, I'm going to, however, just do some highlighting. Uh, the first thing that I would point out is as of January twenty twenty two. The estimated population in Pierce County is nine hundred and twenty eight thousand. The estimated county wide population by twenty fifty would be one point two five million. And that's like adding. Another city the size of Tacoma. Into the population mix within the county. The rate of population growth is spurred by an increase in the migration from King County. Uh, partly attributable to the disparity in housing costs. Uh, owner occupied housing is forty three point four percent in Lakewood, which is lower than Tacoma, Pierce County, King County and Washington State. Uh, persons living in poverty is at sixteen point six percent. And the households uh, based upon the A, um, American Community Survey. Is roughly twenty four thousand seven hundred and twenty five. I would point out to the council too that the twenty twenty census isn't quite out yet. And so we are continuing to use data from other sources. And so that's why you see the uh, the number twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen. Uh, my understanding is the census is supposed to come out with more detailed data uh, beginning March of this year. Uh, on the left, housing costs have risen three times as fast as incomes. Uh, it makes it more difficult at for the average homeowner to afford affordable housing. And if you talk to PSRC. Uh, we are lagging behind growth targets between forty thousand to fifty thousand housing units. And if you take a look at the SSMCP housing study. Their number suggests somewhere between eighty five hundred and nine thousand units for this part of Pierce County. Um, again, the rents continue to rise. Um, and we have some numbers there in your first bullet. And even though the market conditions are constrained, uh, comparatively speaking, Lakewood remains more affordable than some of the surrounding communities. Apartment vacancy rates are extremely tied at two point seven percent. Rent debt continues to be a major issue for some people within the Tacoma metro and Lakewood metropolitan area. With about fourteen thousand households being behind as of August twenty twenty one. Uh, average retail price for housing in the third quarter of twenty twenty one showed a nineteen point three percent increase. Housing demand in Lakewood remains strong uh, with forty eight point eight percent of homes. Uh, being above the list price. And there you see on the last right, uh, last bullet, the median price in the greater. Seattle Tacoma Bellevue areas over seven hundred. Were the median price for the Tacoma Lakewood Metro areas four seventy five, but that continues to rise. Uh, if you take a look at average rents uh, through various sections of the area, uh, we we write them from. The most expensive to the top to the least expensive on the bottom. Uh, Seattle uh, is at close to twenty two hundred dollars with a close to fourteen percent year to year change. And as you go down the list, you see Lakewood at fourteen ninety five. But still with a fourteen percent increase from year to year. Uh, the lowest uh, average rent in the area is Spanaway at fourteen hundred. And they too have seen a ten percent increase from year to year. Uh, this uh, slide actually comes from a report from Pierce County on uh, their housing unit production by units and structures from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. Um, while this is Pierce County, it's also fairly representative of uh, of Lakewood. Housing supply is primarily single family homes or larger. Again, there is a shortage of missing middle such as duplexes and multiplexes. When I say multiplexes, I'm referring to. Duplexes, fourplexes and triplexes. The missing middle housing types are a small but growing share of recent housing production. We are beginning to see some townhouses. And I suspect we will begin to see more. Uh, this coming year. And like I said, from the very beginning, there are very much similarities between the housing mix in Pierce County and Lakewood. We do offer uh, housing programs and partnerships. Uh, there's a a bit of a a detailed description of that in the report. Uh, here I just listed some of the names of some of the programs. Um, and you can see there's about again fifteen. Uh, what's not listed on here is shape. And we'll talk a little bit more about that uh, in the council meeting this evening as well as in this presentation. Uh, recent additions to Lakewood housing policies, I did want to mention again, shape in twenty twenty one. We did uh, move forward with some miss middle, missing middle code amendments in twenty twenty one. We did update accessory dwelling units in twenty nineteen. We adopted the Lakewood Station suburb, the Lakewood Downtown Plan in twenty eighteen. And then the Lakewood Station District Plan in twenty twenty one. And the map to the right shows the boundaries of the two sub area plans. Environmental factors affecting housing. Developers are being required by regulations, changes in codes and by consumer demand. To substitute more energy efficient building materials uh, for existing, uh, should say buildings. Developers will be required to adopt new construction methods and technologies. All these are likely to be expensive, involve some amount of trial and error. Uh, pending amendments to the city's tree preservation code could affect housing production by imposing new requirements. For set asides, restricting development. And potentially in lieu of fees. Material cost increases. I did point out that there's been a significant price cut, it for cost increase in lumber. Uh, it shows here that because of COVID nineteen, it at least twenty four thousand dollars to the price of a new single family home. There's also some discussion in the report of the impacts of milder winters in British Columbia. How that affects the bark beetle, which then affects lumber and its availability. And one of the things that we saw in Lakewood in nineteen forty four during World War Two is there was an another problem with lumber availability. And so you saw the uh, movement towards building houses out of concrete versus wood. That's something that might come back again. And you see that on Bridgeport Way and there's a small little subdivision. Uh, that was built during that time period using alternative sources of construction. So that might be something that you might see in the near future as a way of reducing costs. Now, as we put in more people into the area. Um, you're going to have some impacts upon the waters in the south, huge of sound, and some of the reports seem to suggest. That the uh, treatment plants will need to be upgraded. So long term. You're loo- looking at likely increases in sewer rates and fees. That's not going to happen right away, but it's something that I thought I would just point out to the. Council as we look at some of the impacts of uh, uh, financing and building new housing. Why do we have a problem with housing production? Um, some of the literature suggests that for the past forty years. National housing supply is not ca- kept pace with population growth. And actually Congressman Denny Heck, when he was in office, uh, put forward a report. That talked about this in great detail that uh. Um, seemed to have been largely ignored, but is relevant to this discussion today. The second bullet point, the number of new homes constructed uh, for entry level homes has decreased sharply since the Great Depression. And is eighty percent lower than the amount built in the nineteen seventies. So this goes back to the fact that you're going to be miss building missing metal. You're looking at actually building smaller structures with less square footage. And not seeing the two story. Three car garages that um, are quite frequent in some of the houses in the area. Third bullet, limited land supply combined with restrictive single family zoning. Uh, the limited land supply. In part comes as a result of the geography of the area and Growth Management Act. And some of the single family home, see, single family zoning policies that can be restrictive. Uh, fourth bullet has to do with some supply constraints of rental housing. Not only we have an issue with single family construction. But also with multi family construction. And I think the one point that I would like to emphasize is that all this has been going on. But it was the pandemic. Which really brought this to a focal point. When people began to realize that they didn't have to live. And commute long distances and that they can actually perform their work uh, via virtual means. And end up uh, living with a nicer home further away. Such as in Pierce County. This is where you begin to see some of the impacts of the pandemic and its relationships with Lakewood. How do we fix this? Um, there are several things that we're already doing, so I'm going to suggest that we keep doing that. I would like to uh, expect to, I'd like to point out to the council to expect another round of missile, missing middle zoning amendments. Uh, this year, and this may also be coming about as a result of some additional state legislative amendments. I I would point out that from time to time, we run into issues with people proposing slightly higher density. And the existing water and sewer services. Are not in good shape to support that higher density. And so we we need to spend a little bit of time working with the water district in Pierce County and identifying those areas where we intend to increase density. To make sure that the water and sewer services are inadequate uh. An adequate capacity to make sure that we can carry that density. Um, there are some lots. There are some lots in Lakewood that remain undeveloped because of that recurring problem. As to what extent, I'm not sure yet. But it happens on occasion, and I'd like to be able to identify those areas before we start making major changes in densifying residential areas of Lakewood. We are beginning the process to update the council the comprehensive plan housing element. It's already underway. This work assignment will move forward through two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. Review utility and special district permitting procedures. This is on here because as we go up, sometimes we're running into unique issues, and I'd like to get in front of this a little bit rather than wait for the problem to occur. This is sort of a minor issue, but it can, particularly in the subarea plant areas where we have significant overhead utility lines, we need to make sure that there's proper distance between higher buildings and those lines or undergrounding. Our next bullet is consider financial options beyond CDB and home. Does the city want to use ARPA funds to address not just homelessness, but housing, including the issue of missing middle? Engage in active participation with the Washington State Housing Finance Commission. I'm always amazed that the number of things that they're working on that have some sort of impact on Lakewood, and I seem to find out about them by accident. The latest of which is now we're beginning to see some of the mobile home parks move towards co-ops. And this in part is being assisted by the Finance Commission. We need to have a better working relationship with them. In the past, we have, when they were proposing some low-income tax projects in certain parts of the city of Lakewood, and we did assist them. But we need to have a better relationship with them on how they are approaching projects in Lakewood. And then last one is a kind of a question mark, seeking affordable housing demonstration project through SHAPE. And I say that because we actually have one that might be of interest. This is what we refer to the Borman property, which is located in the Lakewood Station District Plan area. It's roughly about nine acres with approximately seven hundred units, a combination of apartments as well as townhomes. This is a concept plan. Mr. Borman is in the process of selling his property to Tarragon Development. We did meet with them very recently, last week. They will be coming forward with a pre-application in the same area. I'm not sure their project will look like this, but there is a keen interest in moving forward with with residential development. There also seems to be a keen interest in moving forward with a mini, a missing middle concept or component. We are waiting for that application to be received, and that might be something that we can take a look at if there is interest in combining it with home funds, CDBG, or something else. And I'm going to try to keep this short because there's many aspects of this report, and I'm sure council may have questions. And with that, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Buhr. I've got a few questions, but I'll open it to the group. Anyone have questions for Mr. Buhr? Mr. Anderson.
It's not so much a question as a cautionary note and comment. You know, there's an area in Pierce County out in Spanaway where you can develop probably ten units an acre, a single family, more per acre of multifamily, where the cost of the permit, traffic, school, and parks impact fees, and a sewer hookup and capacity charge exceed the value of the raw land. It exceeds twenty-five thousand dollars per unit in a high-density development. That's probably the most expensive outside of the city of Tacoma, for example, because of the sewer charges in that particular area. But it's just a cautionary note as we move forward that while it might be attractive to fund some things, you're really counterproductive at some point by adding all those charges on because it continues to price people out of the market. The other one was about the mobile home park. It's a bit disheartening to sit here that they're reactivating the co-op program, well-intended. But every time I've seen it actually implemented, the only party that wins is the owner of the mobile home park who gets out of a substandard property at an inflated price, leaving the people who have mobile homes that aren't worth the cost of demolition with debt that's so heavy that it causes them to even more financial chaos. It can work, but if we can develop that relationship so that we can be selective about how that's implemented in our community, I think it would be well worth our while. Like you say, it can work, but it has to be at a fair price with the construct for the owners that makes sense financially, not just putting off the inevitable that it's, it's a development that's going to fail. Thanks.
Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, same, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Buhr, I, I do want to thank you for again doing this report with the detail that's in it. I, on past reports, I've been surprised of when I've had discussions with colleagues at AWC conferences and things and and no thing as a result of your having provided these reports that council members from other jurisdictions have no clue as to what, what the status of those particular items is in their in their city to be able to go and do that. I, I just had one question. When we've had a lot of discussions as the county is going through population growth targets, and we have been doing the math that says based on the the potential of our subarea plans for, for, for new residential development and what we would, that we think we're able to meet them. But that do we really have some tools to say that if a piece of some land in the Lakewood Station District or in the downtown area, someone is going to develop it in a residential manner that we're able to ensure that they approach the maximum density that we're talking? I mean, we don't, we didn't, we didn't install any minimum densities in any of those districts. But we keep talking about, well, if they get built to maximum density, and if, if we start to have things get built up, but at less than our projected density will fall short of our targets, although I think that the minimal target that we have outside of those areas, we seem to be exceeding them in terms of number of units per year. But if that's when we next review those subarea plans, we could take a look at how do we ensure or increase the likelihood that density will be maximized when, when parcels are developed? That's all that I have. Thanks for taking, but thanks again, Mr. Buhr.
Any other questions? Mr. Buhr, I had a quick question again. Thank you for the report. It is very thorough, and I'm thinking, Linda, we should send it to John at SHAPE because he'd probably be fairly impressed with this and the level of detail that we have here in Lakewood. My question to you, Mr. Buhr, on the, you mentioned a little bit about the utility issue and capacity, sewer capacity and water capacity, and it makes me wonder why the accessory dwelling unit numbers are seemingly low. Is there an impediment for sewer capacity? So if some, if someone wants to build one, do they have to have a separate connection, or can they tap into their existing home connection?
They have to have a separate connection. You know, and so you're having to purchase additional water and sewer equivalencies and having a separate meter for that ADU. And that's, that's one of the things that we're wrestling with, with the update to the Tillicum Community Plan, because that plan actually included a policy that we speak with the county about reducing the impact fees for affordable housing. And so when we start talking about a partnership with SHAPE, if we did have a pilot project in Lakewood, is there a way in which we can receive some sort of reduction in some of those fees? And then in turn, we end up with some sort of affordability clause on those units for a specific lifetime or a life period. Those are some of the things that need further discussion. And, you know, Mr. Anderson's correct comments about fees is, is correct. And if the council recalls, it was very specific to us when we developed the Lakewood Station Plan, no impact fees.
Right.
And so we did not, we had traffic mitigation fees for the downtown plan, but no traffic mitigation fees for the Lakewood Station project. Now, we've been able to meet all of the criteria for water and sewer based on what the densities were being proposed for the Lakewood Station District. But if we go too high, we're going to run into some problems with major line expansions on South Tacoma Way. So there's a real balancing act here to try to, to take advantage of the existing capacities without having to trigger major utility investments. And then this gets into another discussion with the Tax Increment Financing District. If we are going to have a district and we're going to, you know, fund major utility expansions, what's the size of the district? How much money can we create over what period of time? And what are we going to build with it? So those are kind of some of the things that are in the background. So when we propose these projects, we're trying to balance it all out so that we're not necessarily increasing fees.
Yeah, it's a big issue, especially if you're trying to increase infill density. You know, people are going to be looking at some of these extra capacity charges and those kinds of things. Connection fees are going to say, you know, why worry about it, right?
Yeah, well, one of the things that we've done internally is Tiffany Spear asked us, are there any types of housing programs that we could use ARPA funds for? And I, I proposed an accessory dwelling unit grant program that was highly successful in other communities and other states.
Interesting.
But in order to do it, you're looking at a two-point-five million dollar investment just to get it going so that there are sufficient numbers to, to build accessory dwelling units so that you can actually begin to solve some of these housing issues. And so the comment back from Tiffany was, whoa, that's a little bit more than perhaps people had anticipated, but another city that opened it up had thirty-five applications in one day. So there is a demand if you write the program appropriately and, and can move it forward, but you've got to take into account everything that goes with it, the parking, and in addition, the fees.
Well, and maybe if we're looking at it from a SHAPE standpoint, that's one of those regional solutions that we can talk about if we're trying to increase that density, right, with the simple density tools that we already have, like ADUs or whatever, we've got to figure out a way where the county can lighten up on some of those sewer capacity or sewer connection fees to make it work.
The other thing about ADUs, it's a light touch to density increase. And it doesn't get everyone all upset with changing zoning from, say, R1 to R4. That's another option. The other option is if you have a certain sized lot of a certain large section, perhaps allowing people to have two ADUs rather than just one.
I'd be happy to see one. Yeah, right, exactly. Well, I just, I just think that it's something that's the low-hanging fruit. We just got to figure out a way to make use of the existing tool and, and try to remove some impediments to it. I think the county connection thing, the sewer connection, they may be something we need to look at. Or at least soften the blow because they've already paid for one connection with their existing, in our existing home.
Or maybe we start using home, in combination with Tacoma, start using home funds to buy down some of the sewer costs.
Right. Because I'd like to see it go from six, you know, to like ten or twenty or something a year. There's really no reason why they can't do that. So anyway, my thoughts. Mr. Branstadter.
The, the, the last few comments are, there are obviously places to be innovative and, and, and to do that, that but I guess that is is the situation in in Olympia where they sort of want to be the ones that are innovative and, and, and tell us how innovative to be, you know, if, if, if we get started being innovative, or is that going in along with others such as through the, through SHAPE, going to help us stave off losing the local control of innovative policies? Or are we, or, or is that train coming to run us down from zoning and other things on its way from Olympia?
I don't know. I let Mr. Buhr answer that, but I mean, just on the ADU question, Mr. Branstadter, as you know, the legislature is chewing on some revisions to the state code with regard to that. It may supersede some local jurisdictional code, but there may be some other impacts. Mr. Buhr, do you know?
Well, the, the state did propose a rather heavy-handed bill that would have really preempted cities and the counties from zoning controls.
Right.
That did not make it. There is another proposal out there that has a less of a problem that we can support, but they continue to have cities and counties become more and more a part of a state organization and, and a uniform zoning code where you, you don't have local control. So we have to do some things to maintain it. And, and so far, what I'm suggesting are some things that I think that the community can support and still be in that category of innovative and attempting to, to provide more housing, housing units in the city of Lakewood. But then again, I have to be very clear, there are certain areas in Lakewood where you're not going to see increases in density. The air corridor zone in particular is one area where that's not going to change if anything, the density over time will decrease. So we have some unique aspects, and we have a lot of open space and water. So it's, it's not that easy to meet the, the growth projections that are being requested of us.
Well, very good. Anything else for the good of the order? Well, thank you again for that. I think it's just, it's really helpful information to have, especially for Ms. Farmer and I as we noodle through the, the SHAPE information that is actually next on our agenda tonight. So we've got the South Sand Housing Affordability Partners interim work plan priority discussion, and I believe our planning manager Tiffany Spear is going to help lead us through that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tiffany Spear, I will take you through just a couple of the sheets that were included in tonight's council packet regarding what's going on with the South Sand Housing Affordability Partners or SHAPE that begins on page fifty-four of your packet. There's two things that were included. One was a request for feedback from the local government at a staff level regarding what the interim work plan is what they're calling it, but what should be placed in front of everyone for approval at the elected level as a work plan before the SHAPE executive manager is hired. And the city of Lakewood did submit that. So that information was provided to you in your packet, as I said. And then there was a second document, which was a request for the elected members of the executive board specifically to respond with interim work plan ideas. And so this, I think, is where Councilmember Farmer wanted to direct your attention and asks for some council feedback and discussion tonight. Very quickly, Um very quickly, there are um four or five questions, I believe. The three most significant affordable housing needs in your community. The um top two supports or services that Lakewood hopes to get out of SHAPE. What are the top two supports or services you hope SHAPE can provide regionally? And then any other items you'd like to share. And so what you see on the document here are draft. Responses that are there for you to react to, edit as desired. But other than that, um I'm happy to either keep sharing this or stop. And turn it back over to Councilmember Farmer.
I think I'd like you to keep. Sharing that document. I think it'll help us walk through. Is that okay with the group? This is really our first chance to talk about. About anything SHAPE. In a conversational. This is what I'd like to see kind of manner, so. I appreciate this opportunity. So the the first item that. That Ms. Spear shared was. Uh as she mentioned, a request for all participating cities. And towns to. To give an inventory of of things that they were already doing and. Uh to my knowledge, I'm not sure all the cities have actually completed their piece of it. We have not seen a finalized. Document yet from from the staff level, and then. Then several of us on the Executive Board said, wow, you know, it it might be a little bit different what um what the elected. Members want to see out of SHAPE versus versus what some of our, some of our jurisdictions are are already doing, and so. Hence hence this second request for or the 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 survey of elected officials, so. All of the participating jurisdictions in SHAPE are going through this. This activity, just like we are. So this is our our opportunity to talk about a few things and. Our interim work plan, which is under development. Is being framed, it's very much in progress, very much, and it is being framed by these draft principles. That that you see at the top there. Actions that demonstrate benefit to a broad range of the SHAPE membership. Um providing opportunities for early wins, low hanging fruit. We talked about that a little bit earlier in relation to climate change. And and so on. Um and just to give you a quick. Update on the uh. The executive manager that we're we're still waiting on, we're getting close. We have a a meeting of the Executive Board. Scheduled for February twenty-fourth to do a meet and greet with um the top candidate, so. Things, things are moving forward there. So I would love to talk through each of these and let's start with um number A, which is. What are the three most significant affordable attainable housing needs in your community? And uh the SHAPE group gave a couple of examples, senior housing, preservation of existing affordable housing. Low and moderate income homeownership, et cetera. So we have three items here. That are possibilities. Workforce multifamily rental housing, low and moderate income homeownership. And then number three, ways to prevent or mitigate displacement of current low income resident. Residents in area of redevelopment. Um I'm not entirely sure how to how to have a discussion with the with the items on the screen, but I'd like to be able to try. So and I will take notes. Um I'll kind of keep an eyeball on who might have their hands up. Or. Mr. Mayor, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think it's fine. I think we can do the hand up feature and just kind of go around the room. It looks like. Don's got his hand up there. Maybe we can keep. Keep part of that screen up. Some way Tiffany, if we can, we can reduce. There we go. Yeah, perfect, perfect, perfect.
Great. And I'm I'm going to be looking off screen. I've got all my documents on the screen.
That's it. That's good. I'll call in the hands. So Mr. Anderson had his hand up there.
I would like to see uh senior housing included. We have a dearth of it in Lakewood and aging population. There's no place to go if you want to. Downsize uh. There's uh very few uh low income senior units. So I think that's a priority for a. An aging population. Well, kind of, I think we're kind of barbell. With respect to our our age demographics too. We have a lot of people who have been here a long time but don't have anywhere to go. And we have. Kind of a a pretty youthful population too, so it's a little bit different than some places, but I hear from. Early on in the SHAPE process, I was hearing from. The folks in Sumner. Uh the the mayor and and staff people that, you know, they. They had that issue in Sumner, and if you wanted to downsize and stay around, you had to go to Piala. They didn't have any place for the people to stay and and. And reside in Sumner even though they wanted to.
Yeah, I think that's really true. I'll turn it over. Any else, Don, on that? You you think about somebody like General Harrison, who would probably have loved to stay in this community if there was good. You know, single level, smaller scale, senior housing available. So anyway, Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, I I agree. I'm not so sure that. Uh I think senior housing is 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 more appropriate to put in our top three. Is our three most significant than. Mitigating displacement of current low income residents in areas of redevelopment, you know, as we have done our subarea plans. Uh. You you know that uh. Yeah, while we'll we're we'll look to do that, but that. I don't know that that's what we really need SHAPE to be. Looking at us to do. I think if they could help us with the. Ways to incentivize development and growth of senior housing, because that's something that I've heard for. Ten years from people in the community about. There just isn't. Any place for 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 a senior to downsize into.
I think that's true. There's a great. Demand for that product. Ms. Moss.
I was just. Think going through my mind of some of the things and questions that I've been asked about as far as housing. Senior housing is definitely, but what? How can we? Reach these people? What can we do to help the people that are really living in poverty that can't afford? More than a thousand dollars a month even for renting, so. Those are the ones that's in my ear. Because they're looking for houses for nine hundred dollars or less for rent or whatever, so. Is there anything we can do in this program to help those people?
I think that's a good point.
Be number one and number two on our current suggested list.
Number two, low and moderate income homeowners. Home ownership. All right, there would be more in a rental. I think the ones that I'm talking that are talking to me are renters.
If I could, um Councilmember Farmer or Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes.
The focus of SHAPE is on quote affordable housing, meaning it is, meaning it is not. Focused on subsidized for low and extremely low income. That is a different group of um funding sources and collaborative effort. For instance, through the Lakewood Tacoma Consortium that you works on CDBG and home projects. As well as um for instance, the Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness. That was just completed by the county with input by cities, including Lakewood, and how they're going to now start to implement, so. Um of SHAPE is intended to deal with more market rate issues, but if you get to the point of. Low, meaning less than thirty percent of AMI or even below fifty percent of AMI. That's really a population that needs another kind of program that SHAPE at this point is not focused on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Tiffany, what do you think there about? The comment we just had in the earlier program with. Maybe some focus through SHAPE on regionalizing or figuring out a way to expedite. Remove barriers to the construction. Of some of these accessory dwelling units, which by their nature are smaller. They're within residential neighborhoods. And they provide an opportunity for. Uh you know. Whatever you want to call it, I don't want to call it low income, but certainly. Either some missing middle, some senior maybe, but some moderate income housing.
Um I think there's a couple of ways where SHAPE could be involved with that conversation and advocacy. One of the things that SHAPE is intending to do, and it has for a couple of years now, is provide input to state legislators. Prior to and during session, and that can become a priority item, um moderate family. Housing and or ADUs in particular. Um the idea of using what could be SHAPE uh funds for a pilot project or some kind of demonstration. Maybe that gets identified to cover costs for water and sewer hookup for ADUs. Um another thing that SHAPE's uh been considered a a source for in the future will be. Template code or best practices, and again, that can go to the idea of encouraging, promoting, or even requiring. Accessory dwelling units. So there's a couple of different ways you could bring that issue forward to SHAPE.
And me thinks that the issue uh or the reason why we don't have a good cottage housing development. Has to be the significant expense for sewer and water. Right? I mean, that's the perfect kind of development for seniors or people want to downsize or. Whatever, but it's just extraordinarily expensive to get a project off the ground.
I think it's that, and I think when cottage housing was first talked about, it was discussed as an affordable housing option. And it's really a market rate option, to be perfectly frank. People like it and the price of them, unless they are required by deed, are not going to stay below market rate, so just understanding that it is a needed. Um housing model or style, but not necessarily that it's answering the need for below area median income. You know, that sort of market piece.
Sort of. To refer back to what we're looking at, we have, we have three options. We have a top three. We'd like to like to put in the top three, and we've got a proposal on the table. To remove number three, which is ways to prevent or mitigate displacement of current low income residents in areas of development. In exchange for um a senior housing topic. How do we feel about that?
It sounds good.
Do I see nods? I see some nods. Excellent. All right. Got that. All right, thank you. Um moving on to number B. What are the top two supports or services? You hope SHAPE can provide for your government? So the next one is regional, number C is regional, and number B that we're on now is for us here in Lakewood. And that are the two suggested options are collaborative funding for an affordable housing demonstration project outside of Tacoma. And we had some discussion about some options a little bit earlier with Mr. Bueller's presentation. And then the second one is development of Pierce County relevant best practices in permit review and code development for that. Elusive, missing middle and affordable housing projects. Any thoughts on either of these?
I'm not sure what is meant by number one there, the the. Funding for an affordable housing demonstration project. I wonder if. Maybe collaboration like the example in blue up there, collaboration on identifying and drafting new housing policies and programs. To enhance. Affordable housing such as, you know, accessory dwelling units or. Other types of housing. I think that's to me what. SHAPE can be beneficial in doing is is saying, okay, county, you have a role here in Lakewood or. Spanaway or whatever to facilitate. The construction of more affordable housing because frankly, twenty-five percent of it is. Permit fees and hookups and impact fees. We we got to do better. To be able to get some housing off the ground.
You've got two hands up.
Yep, done, and then Mike.
Recent historical context. Uh I think the genesis of this uh was the thought early on in the SHAPE formation. That uh by having a collaborative effort of Pierce County pretty much as a whole. As compared to uh King Counties or some other areas that are offering as one offs. That uh the opportunity may exist through the state funding or grants such to. Uh cooperatively become a pilot project for something. So if the whole county went together and you have ten municipalities and the county going to the legislature. Whether it's a housing trust fund or some special legislative program, saying, look, here's our idea for an affordable housing project. For the benefit of the whole county and we're we're for it. Uh that we might be able to uh get either state or HUD or a combination of of. Of uh funding sources to do something. It was not thought. At that point anyway, that uh you know. We kick in half million dollars and Piala can put in three hundred fifty thousand and we all do something on grant. Uh that wasn't the idea.
Mr. Branstadter?
Oh, I think, yeah.
You know, and and I agree with Mr. Anderson that the 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 concept of. Demonstration projects uh being put on as a. Getting something done that shows ways to 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 do that and and getting a project off the ground. To do that. I I do think that this particular section of this form. Though is more parochial. It's what can you do for Lakewood? And I would change the first one to say. If we're going back to Mr. Bueller's presentation of where he suggested that there was a possible demonstration project. In instead of saying outside of Tacoma, say in Lakewood. That's what uh they could best provide for us if they could get one going. And in the second one, I would want to add somewhere in that list of. Things in there, the discussions and the thoughts that we had about uh. The utility permits, the sewer and 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 other things, not just in the permit review and code development. But also the. Utility access costs up to to do that. I think that that's something we could. Work into that sentence somehow. It's something that would be a really good service that SHAPE could make happen would benefit us.
Oh, look at that. Miss Spear has it, fee schedules. How does that look? He nods.
I like it.
That works for me.
I I'd insert the word utility fee schedules or something in there.
Being connection schedules, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, did you want the word connection added there?
I think so, utility fee and connection schedules if they're, I think they are separate.
Okay.
Utility connections.
Good, these work for me. Anything else on section B?
Anyone else? Any hands?
I forgot to mention, I had a chance to talk with Councilmember Bokey and he he too agreed in section A about the senior housing. And I don't believe there was anything specifically in section B that he had.
Okay.
Issue with. All right, moving on to section C. What are the top two supports and services you hope SHAPE can provide regionally? To multiple SHAPE members, maybe not all. The first item here is our suggestion determining potential ways that Pierce County can be more competitive for state and federal resources. And the note there is meaning funding of for construction of units. And the second is providing education to elected bodies regarding successful anti-racist and mixed income housing projects. And the second is providing education to elected bodies regarding successful anti-racist and mixed income housing projects and policies. And I confess, Ms. Spear, that I would love to have a little bit more information about number two.
Um, I think when I put this in as a suggestion or an idea for you to consider, this is um how to say it, that shape provides, again, this idea of best practices or um examples, templates, for lack of a better word, where they're saying as you jurisdiction, at whatever population size you are, at whatever stage you're in in maturing your land use code and policies to um expand in density and types of people and types of housing units you have. There's an opportunity to make sure that as you do that, you are um open to as a jurisdiction mixed income housing projects, meaning it's not just a low income housing project. It's not just pure market um pricing. It is something that includes both in a single project. And that could be a horizontal multi-story building, or that could be a horizontal mixed use, meaning or mixed income, meaning you've got a single family market rate next door to a duplex with some lower income restrictions on the price, for instance. And then anti-racist flows into that same thing where you're going against maybe what you see in past zoning practices that include redlining and other things that may have happened. I know in Tacoma, there's a history of that, just given the age of the city. I'm not sure how many of the other jurisdictions in um the county can point to specifically redlining type of practices, but I know Tacoma is not alone. So that was the idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Branstad and then Ms. Moss.
Yeah, I uh I certainly understand the uh and and the second one, I certainly understand uh getting some support and and helping us be successful in getting mixed income uh housing projects and policies. Uh, I I'm I'm not sure that the support is education to elected bodies. Uh, that that the I I'm not sure that's what's needed. And I wouldn't use the term anti-racist uh because I'm not so uh sure that I think that I want to imply that the we're prone to anti-racist or a significant history of anti-racist issues in Lakewood. Um, we have some equity issues. And I know once I want to point at other jurisdictions and say, you know, that their past policies have been racist. So I I I take that word out uh and and focus on mixed income housing projects. But deciding what is, is it education that we need shape to help us with, or is there is it is it more or draft policy and code that will uh incentivize mixed in.
Yeah, I think that's important. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That that is uh the anti-racist piece was the one I was going to to talk about too. I don't think we should, I don't, that one didn't flow good with reading through that for myself because we have the equity and inclusion piece, and we try so hard to get away from some of the old statements and stuff. So the anti-racist is the one I was going to discuss. But Mr. Branstad spelled it out quite well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know. Yeah. Did you see my hand, Mr. Mayor?
I see a little bit, but up against the background.
It is much. So I have a comment on the anti-racist portion. It's meant to be there to address redlining. And so I think that some component of that, maybe we change it, maybe it isn't anti-racist. But it is meant to be there for a reason, and I understand when Ms. Spears, why it was put in there because it does speak to past historical um, you know, policy that was out there. So I think that for us to disregard it altogether is a mistake. So maybe the wording is changed a little differently. Maybe it's not anti-racist. But uh, you know, it was meant there to address those kinds of things and to fix them. So I would like to see something. I'm not quite sure about what the wording would be, though.
How about successful comma equitable mixed income housing projects? I don't know.
Something like that would be better. Um, but yeah, it addresses redlining, which was is a real thing. And especially with housing, obviously.
Anything else, Ms. Bell, on that? Now that I can see your hand. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Anderson?
I don't have a problem with uh with making modification as as Ms. Bell suggests. From I have pretty good anecdotal knowledge of the history of redlining in Pierce County, and I don't think there may be a neighborhood I'm not familiar with in Lakewood, but it generally wasn't a practice because of the time of development of Lakewood. That it went from being the cabins uh to an area where there was some World War II development, and then there was Oakbrook. Uh, I mean, that's and by the time Oakwood was developed, their housing acts have been passed and uh the the barriers that people they counter were personal for natives and institutional. The north end of Tacoma was a very different situation. Where they wouldn't show wouldn't even show houses after World until World War II to people who were from Southern, even from Southern Europe. So we're a little bit different historically, but going forward, I think we have to recognize there have been past barriers. One of the things that I thought shape was being formed for initially could be addressed uh here, which is the 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 best part, the education part on best practices and standardization of uh permitting and processing practices throughout the county. And Lakewood doesn't benefit because we're pretty much at the forefront with Tacoma and Pierce County and now with PALS Plus uh coordinated with the county. But if you are, you know, boarding or Bonnie Lake or Eatonville, you know, you're you're a one off. And um you may be creating some barriers that uh are unnecessary and uh making it more difficult for people to develop housing at an affordable rate there. So uh I didn't see that anywhere in here. That was one of the things we talked to coming out of the chute, so we can get together and people can can uh adopt the best practices, and this can be kind of the the uh repository for standard forms, for example.
Ms. Farmer, did you have a follow up comment, Ms. Farmer?
I I I do have a follow up conversation to the to the anti-racist conversation that we were just having, and and several of us made specific references to Lakewood, but this is a regional thing. And so this is aimed at the entirety of Pierce County. So if there is a history of redlining anywhere in Pierce County, then I just wanted to point that out.
Do we think, though, that if we're asking shape to do some regional support services that item two would capture that? It seems like it should or would historically underserved populations, housing projects, incentives and policies to promote successful mixed income projects?
Do I see nods?
I think the language looks pretty good.
Okay.
Anyone else?
All right, so we're okay with number two. Um, we haven't talked much about number one. Do we want to swap out number one with Councilmember Anderson's notion, or would we like to add Councilmember Anderson's suggestion up? To the end? Now, how important is it? Should it be our our number one and two there? Or should it be at the end? What what's what's the thought? Councilmember Anderson.
Yeah, articulated again, yeah.
What do you think, Don? Should it be? Should it be in the anything else you'd like to share category, what you just mentioned, or would you like to see it as number one and two? In our.
I think it should be to be there when when at the at the end spine, it's when the group is is a group the group has any staying power and continuity is actually developed, that should be a natural uh for the organization.
Thank you. Councilmember Branstad?
Yeah, you know, I uh given that the the nature of this question is what can they do essentially for everybody? And I think um, you know, when we were discussing whether to join shape, there were uh discussions that we had about we're doing a lot of things and we have a lot of things in place, the more so than some of the other smaller jurisdictions in the county. Uh, and that 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 in actuality, there are some things that we would not benefit as much from as others would benefit from being having shared uh policies and forums and 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 processes from the larger jurisdictions to the smaller jurisdictions. And I think that that is really uh a significant service to the members regionally that shape should commit themselves to to making sure that they've got that library and process to share best practices and down there to forums and things uh and and to do that. So if we could put that in there as something that is the, we want shape to focus on. Because it that's what's going to help them fulfill their promise to lift all the boats in the county.
You mean add that to the end?
It's it's either there or go up to one of the previous ones where there was a, there was a, there is an item about uh
Number B two. Yep.
You know, uh, a you know, and just 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 expand on that in terms of uh you know, the whole idea of sharing. Uh, but that sharing becomes less of a what they can do for us and more what they need to do for everybody. So it belongs better in down in C than maybe up in B.
Yep, I uh, item B two is very specific. And I think what you're suggesting is is what we had talked about as as shape came together, which was this this um collector of best practices, this library of resources, um in addition to many other things.
Yeah, like number two, their model incentives. I mean, that's really what we're trying to get to on a regional basis, right? Figure out what what tools are working, what which ones need to be tweaked. I think that looks pretty good.
Yep. Okay. Other than adding anything else to the anything else you'd like to share section, I think we're done.
I think so.
I had one other item in that very last, there's one last section of the forum, which is a long list of folks that we want shape to collaborate with. And I'm not sure that I saw the organization that Mr. Viewer was saying we need to develop closer ties with on that list.
Oh, the Washington State Finance Housing Finance Commission?
Yeah, I I I know it's a laundry list that I'm late and I'm trying to read it, but uh maybe we should just in insert them in there.
You know, Mike, you and I were were speaking earlier and you had a couple of great ideas regarding the principles that are shaping this whole work plan. I didn't know if you if you wanted to share those.
Well, I I think the only principle I'd say that was up on the very top of the very first form was uh uh the there wasn't an element of equity in that list of principles uh that we want them to uh to uh to 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 guide uh uh shape as they were choosing on work plans. Um, and uh, you know, I don't have some some wording specifically to suggest, but it's a thought that or a thread that doesn't seem to be there in that list of six items specifically.
I agree, and it seems to make sense to add it to that we can add, we can add it as the anything else you'd like to share. I like where Miss Spear is going with that. Um, for consideration to add to add an equity lens in all our work to the to the principles. Add uh, yeah, equity as a as a principle.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I agree. All right, Mr. Mayor, I think we have it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Farmer, for leading us through the exercise. I know the the consultants will be happy to have qualitative feedback like this. So thanks for doing that. Thanks for putting it on the agenda. So it's great.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on that? Let's see if I get to my list here today. Otherwise, I think that wraps up the items on our study agenda for tonight. Uh, you see the items tentatively scheduled for the February twenty two, twenty twenty two regular city council meeting. It looks like we'll have the business showcase and award for stormwater repair projects. An execution for investment grade audit of the Lakewood City Hall. The agreement that we reviewed tonight with Pierce County for the PALS plus permitting system and some appointments to the citizen advisory boards and commissions. It looks like we're not going to set the adoption of the three year climate change work plan for next Monday night, that that's going to be subject to further review and consideration, I believe, Mr. Caulfield, correct? On that, very good. So then we turn to Mr. Caulfield for his report.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. Just a few updates. I'll kind of run through this real quick here. Uh, just a friendly reminder that that uh PC RC is going to have their annual general assembly meeting this Thursday evening beginning at 6:00 PM. It is virtual and um just also wanted to note that the city is going to be recognized by the Health Department with a Healthy Communities Award, actually, as it relates to our um new energy and climate change chapter. So uh the city will be one of the local municipalities recognized there. Um, as Mr. Viewer mentioned uh last week, um our our city team here, we had an introductory meeting with the representatives of Tarragon, which is a regional developer based out of Seattle, although they do have a an office in Sumner. And uh they recently acquired almost nine acres within the Lakewood Station area. And so they're moving forward on a fairly large uh TOD development. And as Mr. Viewer pointed out, um they're going through that planning process right now. Um, overall, it was a very, very uh positive meeting and um very excited to have them come into Lakewood and invest. Um, we also learned last week that you might remember Chief Jim Sharp talking about this, but the West Pierce Fire and Rescue District is going to be bringing on a community nurse. And now this person, she's expected to start in the next couple of weeks or so. It'll be a registered nurse um who is going to be contacting people who have medical minor issues, though on a regular basis are calling uh 911. And so rather than continuing to new to contact. Continuing to new to contact nine one one, they'll um, then be in contact with this person. Uh, the council member, um, that was one of the first things that our behavioral health contact team actually addressed when it was stood up in February of. Two thousand fifteen, and given that the folks that the fire district and that our police department. Come in contact to when this person starts, we're going to link them up with our behavioral health contact team, given that it's likely they're interacting with um. Some of either the same or similar similar population out there in in our in our community.
That's a great idea.
Um, last year, um, Congress on a bipartisan vote um, adopted. Um, fairly large uh, investment package, transportation package called the Infrastructure Investment and 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 Jobs Act. Um, late last month, uh, the White House subsequently came out with a memo outlining various grant competitive grants. That are going to be made available um, to cities um, as it relates uh, to that to that transportation package. Uh, the federal program is now called Building a Better America and um, includes funding in the area of transportation. And sidewalks as well as environmental, for example, our Clover Creek Flood Mitigation Alternative Study that we're underway. And also cybersecurity, so last week our team, um, we met with our um, federal lobbyists and just did a walkthrough, talk through. On all the twenty five different programs, and at the very least, there's five or six that we think. Um, we could be advantageous for Lakewood, and again, the the key topics would be transportation. And sidewalks, environmental and um, cybersecurity, though as more information comes out about the grants as they go through their. The development of their criteria and their guidelines and their application process and things like that, there could be more available as well. Also, this is not a one year and done, uh, this package that was. That was adopted by Congress and signed by the president is actually a five year plan, so it's not something that, you know, if if we don't get an application in. Later in twenty two, you know, we got twenty three and twenty four, et cetera, so it's kind of a long game here that we'll be playing as we evaluate. This competitive program, and speaking of transportation, you might have seen last week that. Uh, Washington State Legislature has come out with its own transportation proposal called Move Ahead Washington. Sixteen point eight billion dollars and is looking to fund a number of projects and programs. Uh, again, focused primarily on transportation, um, here in Lakewood and specifically the twentieth Legislative District. Um, there's uh, four large projects that have been proposed, um, right at the top of the list is the I five. Uh, Nisqually Delta at seventy five million, which um, is a key priority for the city and for SSMCP. Um, a good bulk of that money, about two thirds, more than two thirds would go to the design as well as needed right of way. Improvements, and then a small amount of money would go to some roundabouts out in um. Um, SR five oh seven, um, so uh, so some good news there. Um, also, two hundred and forty four million dollars is being proposed to continue the HOV lanes. Uh, from Tacoma from well, South Thirty Eighth all the way down uh, through Lakewood into into uh, JBLM, and that's a project. That we have advocated for over and over in in the in in the past, and then there's some BRT transportation funding. Uh, for for Pierce Transit, and then there's um, a project um, in 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 the Pual Avenue. Transit Complete Streets and improvements in Tacoma. Um, now unfortunately, it doesn't include our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar uh, ask for our multimodal study, but we'll we'll keep at that. Um, this, you know, I think I think the dollar amount is probably too small, but it's also a study and not. A project that is is going to complete something, which is typically what the state legislature wants. Um, likewise, it doesn't include our request for um interchange improvements at 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 JBLM Main Gate. Though also, this was the first time that this was out of the gate, so we'll have to come back at that, we're going to continue. You to promote those projects as the state legislature goes through the process, matter of fact, E W C is asking. That the state legislature consider a larger package above and beyond the sixteen point eight billion dollars that's currently proposed, so. Um, more 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 to come on this, um, also, the package includes some revenue. New flexibility for cities as it relates to its transportation benefit districts. Um, in addition, it also includes additional funds for safe routes to schools, the grant program. And um, the T I B's Complete Streets Grant Program, which are important to Lakewood because we have done very, very well there in the near past. And so additional money's there only bodes well for us um, as a as a local municipality, so. Um, overall, I would I would define what's being proposed, you know, uh, positive for 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 Lakewood from a regional standpoint. Um, also, um, in partnership with SSMCP and the city of Lakewood has taken a strong leadership role here. Um, I'm pleased to announce that the Senate um, last week passed out the Defense Community Compatibility Account. And uh, this is really a a comparison of the federal DCIP program that the city uh, was an advocate for a number. A number of years ago and was not only created and authorized, but also funded, well, um. It's moved, it's it's passed out of the Senate, so it's been authorized out of the Senate, now it heads over um, to the House. And it almost died, however, Senator Conway, who has been a huge proponent of this program, he actually refers to it as Washington State's Brack Bill. Um, was instrumental. So and getting it through the Ways and Means Committee and then getting it, you know, I think it bypassed rules and went then went right to the floor. Um, and again, he has been such a strong advocate over the years, um, but again, um, it's made it through, it doesn't include funding. But again, if we can get it authorized this session and then come back for the major budget session next. Year when the when the state legislature is developing their capital budget for the up for that coming by end, um, we'll be in a good position, so knock on wood. We're hopeful that it's going to get through the House as well, um, also another key priority for SSMCP in the Lakewood as it relates to our service members. But also their spouses and their families is occupational licensing. And um, I'm pleased to announce that there's uh, four major bills moving forward, including one by our own representative Mari Levitt. Uh, that will that will address that, including three of them that would enter Washington into um, various federal uh, uh, compacts. That will make it easier for those spouses.
You kind of cut out there, Mr. Caulfield, unless it's just me.
Right now, that's a. That's a pretty significant, significant barrier. Um, and uh, so um, I think I mentioned on the calendar, um, again, Thursday evening, seven P uh, six P M. Virtual, it should be in your um, should be on your council calendar, um, again, PCRC General Assembly. So um, with that, that's my report, thank you.
Do we have to necessarily register for that or just kind of show up on Zoom on the general?
I think uh, as far as I know, you just show up on Zoom, you're already registered, you're you're all. You're all members, so, yeah, you're all part of the general assembly.
Got it, okay. Very good, any questions for Mr. Caulfield?
The mayor, since it's not in person, there will not be snacks. So I'm trying to get out ahead of that one.
Yeah, a- as well you have, I see, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I was just uh, wanting to ask a question on the town hall. Programs that are scheduled for this week, are those, do we just show up for that one, or do we have to register for those as well?
Yes, uh, Deputy Mayor Moss, um, yeah, um, our. Let's see, offhand, our twenty eighth legislators are actually holding a town hall the same. Evening as PCRC, and I think at the same time, I think theirs starts at six thirty, and uh, we did provide a link in your calendar. Um, I think it's Facebook Live is how they're is how they're doing it, so um, I think you can just jump in, I don't believe.
You don't have to re-register for the town halls. Okay, it's not, they want, they usually want you to register for PSRC though, typically. It doesn't mean you can't.
Yeah, I haven't, I, yeah, I haven't seen that, all I've seen is, here it is, and here's the agenda, and uh, here's the Zoom link, so.
I just like to know about how many people are going to be on there.
Thank you.
Welcome, any other questions? Okay, if not, let's go to council comments and wrap this up. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say uh, a thank you to uh, Councilmember Farmer and yourself, Mr. Mayor, on your work on the. Uh, the housing, the S S, I forget the the letters, um, shape, there we go, shape. Um, I just, it's really great to see, and I love the initiatives, and I love what Lakewood is putting forward, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Very welcome. Ms. Farmer?
Uh, it shape has pretty much taken up my, taken up my time the the past couple of weeks, and I really, really appreciate staff. Support and and the city manager's support on that, uh, want to call out Ms. Spear and and Mr. Buhr as well. And I want while while I'm on the topic of of thanking folks, I really want to thank uh, Mr. Buhr for his work on the Climate Action Plan. And the and the work with the Planning Commission and and another thank you to the Planning Commission for for um. Muddling through that, there's, there's a lot going on there, and I also wanted to thank the uh, Deputy Mayor for attending the Lake City Neighborhood. Association for me on Thursday when I had a health issue, last minute health issue, so, so thank you for that.
Very welcome. Ms. Uh, let's see, Mr. Branstadter.
I I I just wanted to comment that Mr. Bucic uh. Did a really exceptional job at the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting of where he uh. I readily actually anticipated all of their concerns and got them addressed and uh. And had a really good conversation uh, uh, with with that group of citizens, um, and uh. Represented us all at the city well, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Anderson.
I'd just like to throw my thanks and on to uh, first Tiffany Spear and then Councilmember Farmer for uh. Picking up the ball and and running with it on shape, uh. I, there there were a lot of meetings that I attended where. People had good ideas and nothing happened, we finally got people to agree to. Take the, take it a step farther to actually fund uh, the uh. Facilitator turned into to whatever. Project Director, whatever it's going to be called, uh, uh, role, and uh, and Ms. Farmer did some. Good work on uh, bringing Lakewood to uh, the table, continuing on the work that Mr. Spear laid groundwork for, so. Thanks to uh, those two, uh, I think that can be a successful asset for the county. And I will not be uh, going to PCRC on Thursday, I have airport pickup for out of state relatives.
Very good. Sounds more fun. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, first of all, I wanted to say thanks to uh, our city manager, he did an excellent job uh. At the Chamber of Commerce and also at Rotary on the update of the state of the city, so, but well done, well received and good job. I like the way you did that. On Thursday night, I did attend for uh, Councilmember Farmer, the North Neighborhood, the Lake City Neighborhood Association. Uh, and yes, Mr. Bucic did a wonderful job, the only thing that came back that I saw. That was a question was uh, if anyone submit, any one of the members submitted from that area to the ad hoc committee for the. And we, I couldn't, I didn't know any of the names from the people, and so if they were not chosen. It was asked if perhaps in some other way they could be a part of that or attend to have some say in. That ad hoc committee, so that was the only thing that came back that I needed to bring back to the. To the body, but I, everything was great, um, uh, they really appreciated the information that Mr. Bucic shared. Uh, so there were some questions that, yeah, like Mr. uh, Branstadter said, that he was able, he was prepared to answer them, so. Good job, I just gave them some updates on some of the upcoming events for the city, especially. Alonia Center. And I did attend the uh. Airman Leadership School on um, that was. On the seventh, you know, uh, normally it's just Air Force Airmen, and this now is all branches. So they had a large group of uh, Army, Air Force, Navy, uh, National Guard, it was, it was a huge. Event, normally they have it at night, but uh, this week, this time they had it in the afternoon because of. Other restrictions that they had going on, but well done, very well done, a large group of people and uh. I'm happy to see that they are combining the all branches into this leadership school, so that's all I have, thank you.
Well, very good, thank you, it's been a a busy week, I I just want to start with thanks to staff for tonight's reports, the housing. Report is fantastic, good data for all of us, it plays into the work we're doing with shape. Uh, speaking of shape on Wednesday, I attended the uh, sub work group, subcommittee work to kind of assist with. The process we went through tonight, so I enjoyed stepping in for a brief moment, but I'm happy to hand the reins back over to Ms. Farmer. For her work on that, unless you need me, uh, and then on Thursday, I did attend the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting just toward the end. To pop in and say hello, and it was a good meeting, Mr. Woods, Larry Woods does a fantastic job at keeping that organization going. And uh, he he is really an example to be followed by the other neighborhood associations, he does a fantastic job there. Um, on Friday, I have started to set aside time in the morning for Brianna to kind of fill up my schedule with either meetings with. Folks, constituents, or interviews of applicants to the citizen and advisory boards and committees. And that has been a really interesting process to get to know people that that we may not otherwise know, and to thank them for their interest in volunteerism. And to sort of glean their interest in that particular committee that they want to apply for, so for example, the folks that. Were on the consent agenda or will be on the consent agenda next week, Robert Estrada for the Planning Commission and Robin Sutton for the Arts Commission. Uh, these folks are actually getting a one on one interview, and uh, it's really a a great opportunity to meet them and to thank them again. So anyway, there's some method to the madness, just so you know, when their names do appear on the appointment for your consideration and um. Vote. On Friday, uh, after those interviews, I attended the Master Builders Association sort of meet and greet, we had a conversation about. Uh, how we can collaboratively work together to enhance policy for housing uh, in uh, Lakewood and certainly in the county. And I have to tell you that the folks at the Master Builders Association, and they represent a lot of folks in the community, they were very laudatory. With their comments about how well Lakewood does with its planning department, its building department, and certainly with its very progressive. Approach toward um, making housing happen in our community, so I just wanted to pass along those those positive thoughts that they. Consider Lakewood a model for a lot of other jurisdictions, which is nice to hear. And then at noon, I also attended Lakewood Rotary and uh, heard from our own city manager do a fantastic job. At encapsulating kind of the state of the city, it was really well done, good visuals, and I want to thank you for doing that, Mr. Caulfield, I think it was well received. Other than that, it's going to be a busy week as well, we will see you unless there's anything else for the good of the order. If not, oh, Ms. Waters there, do you have something? No, okay, good, it's always a bad sign when the lawyer, when the lawyer pops up at the end. Alright, we're adjourned, we'll see you next week, thank you.